Absent.
Kathleen Ploso?
Absent.
Jason Bowman?
Absent.
Dave Moon?
Here.
Jonathan Moon?
Here.
Okay, reading and approving previous month's minutes.
I will be suspend, suspend the rules and dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Old business, there is none. New business, rezoning of parcels, I'm not going to name the whole thing, commonly known as 476 Adams Avenue and the parcel commonly known as 472 Adams and the parcel commonly known as 360 North Smith from an R1 to an I1. Do we have the owner? Would you like to come up, please, to the podium?
Hi. I'm Alan Myers.
Okay.
Would you like me to explain?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
I saw you had a parcel up on the screen.
Sam?
Come here.
Right here is three, uh, three areas that I own, okay? There's a small house here. This is, uh, this is an empty lot right here. There's two mobile homes that sit right here, okay? One, two, and then two mobile homes. This one actually takes a couple of lots. This is, uh, previously called Miller's Trailer Park years ago, okay? What, uh, what I, uh, last summer, uh, spring, summer, I, I removed the mobile home that was sitting here. These two are still occupied currently, okay? What I wanted to do, and the dormitory sits over here, the old dormitory, okay? Smith Street, as you see here, misses Adams Avenue, right there on the corner. Woods on this side of the road. The Quonset Hut is on the south side of the road there as well. I wanted to put four, uh, possibly five, depending on the size of, of the storage units, okay? On, on the property right here, okay? And the doors would be facing Smith Street, okay? And eventually, what I'd like to do is go ahead and encompass these three lots into storage areas and use the small house as an office, okay? The small house is actually occupied as a rental currently as well, too, okay? But what I'm trying to do is change the, the dynamics of it a little bit, uh, get rid of the rental, the rentals, uh, and, and eventually have, have this space as, um, as, uh, storage unit rental space, okay?
Okay.
That's really what I'm, I'm looking to do. That's why I'm, instead of just the, and in one area is all I'm starting with, it would be, uh, like a half a pole barn, okay? You have, uh, towards, towards Smith Street would be the front of, of the, the openings where you'd get into it. It'd be on Smith Street side, uh, and where the trailers are on there, it would be just, it would look like a half, if you were looking at it, it would look like a half of a pole barn, okay? So, in that way, when, uh, the time comes and my residents move out, okay? All I can do is just hook right onto that and, and make the rest of the pole barn, okay? And then add more, which would make it relatively simple, okay?
Now, where would the access be on the second ones you put up?
Well, what I would do is buy enough room on the opposite side, which would be the west side of that property, as a small driveway, uh, that would run back to the alley to have access to the other side.
Haley?
Mm-hmm.
He wants this rezoned to I1? Is that what a storage?
Yes.
Not a B3?
It can be B3.
Yeah, it can be.
It can be, yeah.
What's, what's the difference?
For what you want, either one will work well. One is industrial, one is business.
And industrial would...
Your storage places can go on an industrial lot.
Uh, what's across the street at Quonset Hut, does anybody know?
It's I1.
Yeah, I1. That's what's in your guys' packets, is that they're zoned, so that way you guys know what's zoned around there.
I'm, I'm unfamiliar with those two regulation zones, okay? If, if across the street is I1, I, I think they've been that way for quite some time. I'm sure that would work just fine as well.
This is kind of new to me. If we change it to B3 or I1, what does that do with the ability for him to have people living there and renting out those other properties?
Bill, I talked to Bill about that, uh, as, the other day, when we, and he said, as long, correct me if I'm wrong, okay? As long as they're in there currently, until they move out, it wouldn't, it wouldn't change the residence of the people living there. Is that correct? Until they, until they move out.
Couldn't you always live there?
They're taxed on usage.
The zoning...
It's taxed on usage, not on how it's done.
It's taxed on what their actual use is and not what the zoning is, so it would be taxed as residence until they move out and the tax rate changes. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, I'm just talking about, is it legal for, if we zone it one way, is it legal for them to actually be living? Oh, yes.
Yes, and they'd be grandfathered until it changed.
Give you an example, if you go down between Miami Street and Holman, all the property on the north side of, uh, West Canal Street is owned heavy industrial for the railroad. There's a lot of homes down there that people live in.
That's fine, I just want to make sure, want to make sure we're working great, another problem.
Okay, so that, that's what I, I'm asking to do, just so I can go, proceed to get all the measurements that I need and everything, just to move forward, uh, to, to start the building with it.
You'll be fencing and securing this area and all that?
Yes, security, there's already electric there, uh, won't have any, um, any plumbing, but there's already electric available at the area, which I'll put up security and lights and, and actually, the neighbors will probably like it a little bit better because it's a dark corner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, is, anybody in the audience have any comments?
Are any of the neighbors here?
Anybody on the board have any comments?
Have you checked with the state by chance on their rules and regulations on retention ponds or anything like that? I know they get sticky about that, I hate to see you go forward with this and then get stalled by that.
You said retention ponds?
Yeah, for water runoff here.
For runoff of water streets. Well, I do know that, that on the corner there, of course, right there at the corner of Adams and, uh, Smith, there is a drain, there's a big drain there, but no, but I, if, uh, I can check that, that's, that's a very valid point.
That is, that is something that they will require. That, that is something they require a retention pond. That's what I'm in your board and other, like, city requires a retention pond because you're taking out, um, grass and putting gravel in, so you have to have retention pond.
Good, good, okay.
Learn something.
Heads up, I'll get that, I'll get that.
All right.
Uh, you guys let me know, uh, at some point if, if we can get it changed over or...
We'll vote on it tonight and it will be taken to the city council for their meeting next Monday.
Now, you will need to, you also need to be at that meeting, we are merely an advisory board, the city council, so they may have questions for you also at that point.
There we go.
Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion to take a vote?
Will we vote, will we vote on B3 or any one?
I think I, if he wants I1, that's the highest, might as well go that way. Kind of eliminates any question later, okay?
I make a motion, we...
Vote on.
Vote to change this to, from B, uh, from R1 to...
From R1, yeah, we're going to vote for all three properties
Yes.
to be changed from R1 to I1.
I second the motion.
Rick Day?
Yes.
Dennis C?
Yes.
Joe Mullenex?
Yes.
Dave Moon?
Yes.
Jonathan Moon?
Yes.
Sandy Faust?
Yes.
So again, the city council meeting will be Monday at 6:00 PM, right here in this, this room.
As far as we're concerned, it's, you're good.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, next one, rezoning parcels. Hold on. Uh, commonly known as 105 Benton from I1 to B3. Um, they are owned by an abundant life church and they're moving into the old...
Bonavista. It was the old Bonavista building.
Bonavista, that's right. Building. And they, they would like a change so they can operate a church in there. Uh, is there anybody here?
Yes, ma'am.
Your name? Hi.
Hi, I'm Charlie Riley, I'm the senior pastor.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Charlie.
Nice to meet you guys. Some of you guys I don't recognize.
Are you the one on WWKI?
Yes.
Tell them the Bonavista's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
That's okay.
That is me.
Okay, anybody watching on TV, forget we said that.
Yeah, oh, Thursday nights, WHNB TV 40, 9 o'clock.
You sound like those candidates.
If you're, if you're I1 now, you can still operate as B3. You don't need to change.
You can always go down.
Yeah.
You can go up.
The, uh, less ardent part in construction, no one's doing the remodel and everything, so, uh, you know.
When, when I first went up to planning commission, um, there was a, a different planning director than currently and Brenda Douglas is the secretary.
Oh, that's county. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, never mind.
She pointed it out to us, we, we thought we were good when the church purchased the property.
Because we thought it was under, it was Bonavista, so it was an institutional facility already.
I don't know who...
I think you're, I, I don't see any reason to change it.
I don't know who, I don't know who brought the question up, honestly. We thought we were good.
You're, I think you're good.
According to our ordinance on the, the, the table, sorry, um, it says that a church or temple cannot be in an I1 or an I2, but it can be in anything else.
It cannot be.
It cannot be?
Right. That's, that's what the ordinance says, or the table for the ordinance. That's why we decided to go ahead and have them rezone.
Well, it should be on the safe side, get it changed.
We'll do it, yeah, we'll do it. That doesn't make sense to me, I think. Okay.
That's great.
Okay. Are there any questions, comments? Anybody?
I make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
Vote on it. Vote to approve it, yeah.
Uh, roll call. Rick Day?
Yes.
Dennis C?
Yes.
Joe Mullenex?
Yes.
Dave Moon?
Yes.
Jonathan Moon?
Yes.
Sandy Faust?
Yes.
Okay.
Ma'am, my assumption is next Monday also?
Yes.
Yes.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
All the way.
Okay.
Oh, no shameless plugs at the city council. Throw that one out there.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, guys.
Uh, okay, petition to vacate the north-south alley that is west of 211 West Main Street property. Uh, do we have anybody here? Come up, please.
Both of those?
The owner or the person that's... Do you want the owners of the property?
Well, are they here?
Yeah.
We are.
Okay, yeah.
Now, you're 211?
I'm 215.
You're the, you're next door.
I'm the, yeah, he's wanting to change it.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough.
All right, oh, yeah.
Well, let's hear from who wants to change it first, so.
I asked for it, just to put it.
Okay, okay.
There's a, there's an alley that goes through, that doesn't go through. Chuck Brimberry's place has been just off, paid about 40 years ago.
Yeah.
So, we bought 211, so we want to make sure that alley is actually vacated before we do anything with property lines, because it does change the property line.
Um...
Let's go ahead and put it up on there.
Bring it up, Sam. Yeah, hold on.
When you, when you zoom too much, it drops off the picture.
There we go.
Yeah, it's kind of a pain. All right.
Hey, you can see right inside here.
Yes.
Now, this is 211, this is your house, 215, right?
215, right.
And, and this is Chuck's house and, and they got a fence across here, so if, if we decide to put a garage back there, it changes our setback compartment, so we just want to clarify the alley, whether it's an alley or whether it's not an alley.
The history right here, uh, I did a little research since I bought ours a couple of years ago and took out a lot of stuff and, and actually thought it was a shared driveway at that time or, or ours, I wasn't positive. Put a lot of money into that and the neighbors lived there 37 years and it's always been closed on our side. So, it's not been a thruway at any point, uh, his mother owned the home before then, so it wasn't then. So, I'm not sure how many decades that side's been closed, at least with a fence or shrubs, is what I've been told. Uh, but, uh, anyway, I just wanted to make sure you're all aware of the history since we were notified that our side is, um, I put a lot of money into that and, uh, like you said, the neighbor and I use it and share it right now and, uh, not sure on the other side of the alley, but this one's been closed for several decades.
All right, well, basically, what they're asking doesn't have any, doesn't affect you in any way, shape, or form.
No.
So...
Well, it does, because if we close an alley, then it gets, it'll get five foot of tax bill.
But we don't know if that, that alley is already, for the most part, closed, I mean, you've already got it blocked up, but we don't know if it was ever officially closed.
It's never been officially closed.
And where do you know this from? Where, we know, where do you know this from? That it's never...
I said, not that we know.
Yeah, well, we'll have to check into that.
Sure. Thank you.
And at that time, we can go back and revisit to see if we're going to, we would close that alley for you or if it, if it is already closed. In other words, we're putting the chicken for the horse on your side of the alley right now.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, now, back to the matter at hand, the north part of the alley.
Hey.
Wait, put it back down.
Yeah, um...
So, I, so I own this duplex right here, um, and the tenants that I have in it, his parents live right here. Eric Yard, uh, he is my tenant, and this garage actually faces Main Street, so if he were to close this, it would screw us, and I, we, they use this because this is our garage, which faces this way. So, taking this out, I mean, it all...
How are they getting the garage?
Right, how are they going to get in their garage?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, I used to live at 211. Used to be my house, and at 1983, there was no fence there, so I know it's happened since then. Yeah, I, and Eric was my neighbor.
Yeah, his, yeah, his family's lived there.
Yeah, forever.
Forever, yeah.
Okay.
And so, he was wanting to be here tonight because he was pretty upset they're trying to take his, his drive out, so he wasn't able to make it because he was sick.
Yeah, my concern after driving through there again the other day is blocking off that garage.
Yeah, like he can't get to it.
Yeah, that, you'd have no other access at all.
At all, and it would be different if the garage faced the alley, like it's built east and west, but there's, you'd have to tear it down and rebuild it to face the alley.
Sam, bring the map back up.
Now, this is... That's the alley here, and so when they, when they drive in here, you know, if they're, like, because I come and work on it, I'll drive in here and I actually come out this way.
Right, but that, that curve part there, that's his property.
Well, and that's fine, if they want to continue that fence there, this was how it was before I locked it.
Right.
If you take that fence away back, you can't turn it, it's a T.
Right, but it also looks like on your property that somebody's been driving out the other side of the garage.
Right here.
At least, at least at the point of these, at least when these pictures were caking.
Right, but it's just a, it's just a really inconvenience to even have to try to even... If, if you take that away, you're trying to get down through here, which it's a tight squeeze if you drove this and looked at this, this is a very tight squeeze, so if you're trying to pull in and out of here, it's just...
Yeah.
Tight squeeze between the two.
I mean, it's going to affect, if I ever, this is to sell the property, it's going to affect my resale.
Okay.
We just want to clarify before we do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Anybody have any?
So, why, so why are you wanting to close it?
Well, if you close it, it gives you five more foot, and when you put a garage back there, because of the setbacks, it gives you room to put your garage back there in the rear.
But to me, that's just because he wants to build a garage, that's...
He wants five more feet, that's what we're talking about.
Well...
Closing off his access for five feet.
I prefer not to have people driving between my house and stuff, I mean...
But it is an alley.
It's an alley.
It's an alley.
And has been forever.
And to me, nothing, nothing against Chuck back here, but if I have an alley on my side, I want the alley on the other side, I drive all the way through.
That's another, that's another stigma. What we're doing, what he's doing is not...
But this has nothing to do with that, it's South Carolina.
Getting him taken away to get you five feet, you see what I'm saying?
I mean, that's kind of selfish, I've been...
I don't know about selfish, but...
Been there for three years.
It's been there for years and years.
Just the same stupid man do it.
Fair enough.
I mean, you could build around it if you have to, that's what I'm saying.
I can't move that fence over to the property line.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Sure, sure.
Okay, I just...
Right. But let's say you could...
We're in a discussion with ATC right now, they have a, their telephone pole in the middle of property, which they're not supposed to have either.
Is the setback on the side three feet or five feet? I thought it was three feet.
It is five feet, yeah.
It's five feet, okay.
What?
The, the side setback on the secondary building?
Three feet on property, I don't know what it is.
Secondary building is three feet.
Five foot from the main alley, how do I be for a side alley?
So, okay, but, okay.
Yeah, so it'd be three, I think.
Three foot on...
On the side.
Property size, but that's an alley, so is it five foot from alley, even though it's not an important alley, it's not the main alley? If you're going down the main alley, you're going to be five foot back.
That's in the back.
That's in back.
Right.
Side would be three then?
Not in the back.
I understand, I just clarify, it's still an alley, you know, so...
But it's, but it's property line, too, I'm just trying to think through it. It's property line, alley indeed, but it's, there's a property line up the alley. Yeah.
There's no, that's how they used to do it, you know?
Right. That's grandfathered.
Yeah, that's how they used to do it.
So, you need to be like eight feet from the center of the alley, or do we take three feet of utility? No, that's what's now.
We'd have to look at where the property line actually was, because that would be, in between those two property lines will be the alley, and it would have to be three feet off of that property line. So, if they close the alley, then the middle of the alley, each, each individual will own to the middle of the alley.
Which doesn't do anybody any good.
Well, it doesn't do him any good.
Not at all.
Right, so...
Unless someone wants to build a new garage for us. We'll make a new garage, anyone looking around.
When can do that?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, thank you both, and we'll...
We just want a clarification, so we know where, either way.
Okay. I make a motion, we take a vote on closing the north-south alley between 211 and 215 West Main.
To the east.
For the south.
West alley.
To the west.
To the east-west, down to the east-west, not below.
Yes, okay, yeah. We don't go through his fence.
Right.
To clarify, this will eliminate them from coming in on Main Street, right?
If we close it, yes.
Yes.
All right.
To, to clarify, just on my understanding of what you're voting on, this is, you said it's the chicken before or something, but this does not talk about changing five, six decades of our side.
This is from, this is from Main Street to the east-west alley.
To the back alley.
That's all we're talking about right here, right now, yeah.
We'll take care of you later.
Thank you.
If need be.
If need be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I second the motion for the vote.
Okay. Haley?
Okay. Uh, Rick Day?
No.
Dennis C?
No.
Joe Mullenex?
No.
Dave Moon?
No.
Jonathan Moon?
No.
Sandy Faust?
No.
Now, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Since it was voted no, does it still go in front of the city council, or do I need to pull that back?
No.
It still goes? Okay, I just want to double-check on that.
So, that'll be next Monday?
Yeah.
Yes.
What time is that, 6:00?
6:00 PM right here.
Okay.
Basically, you get to go through this again, but with our recommendation to not close.
Well, thank you guys so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, petition to vacate undeveloped land commonly known as East 8th Street between North Wayne and Highway 19, known as Benton Street. Parcels to the south of the property...
No, no, you missed Wayne's other one.
Hmm?
No, that is, that is what we just did.
That's what we just did.
Oh, got you, got you, okay, sorry, I got it. I'm sorry.
Okay, commonly known as 117 North Wayne Street and 332 East 6th Street. I think, do we have that, anything?
Yes, we do.
We'll have it, that's it.
All right.
Okay. Um, do we have the owners?
You're coming up. Are you talking on this, Steve?
No, I thought the bill just had to resolve just to get the paperwork done. I mean, it's ours, obviously, that those people's property has just never been the, what was it, recorded?
Yeah.
I'm just a builder, I'm just one that caught the fact that when I went to get the parcel, or get the survey done, that when the survey came back, it looked nothing like that because the part that was vacated back however many years ago was never documented, recorded back into Guyer's name from when the city closed the road down. But they've been paying taxes on this for all these years.
What are they looking for us to do on this?
Finalize the paperwork, because when it comes to the surveyor's office, the surveyor doesn't look any, the survey didn't look anything like that.
They lost like 50 feet.
They lost 50 feet that the city at one point in time when they vacated 8th Street, turned it over to these people, they've been paying taxes on that, but it's, when I went to get it surveyed, it showed it being a square lot and not that triangle wedge, which is 50 more feet of the property, and we're just trying to get the recording done, so it's actually what the assessors assess the property at.
So, what's, so the legal documentation says it's still a street there?
Right. So, it just never got recorded back in the 50s whenever that road got abandoned, but it is Guyer's property, but when I went to... But when I went to get the survey done, it didn't match up to what the GIS map did. So, but I looked into it and found that it went all the way through this process, but never got recorded. But the assessors at some point got it recorded because they show it, they're taxing it.
Well, man. Bill?
You explain it better, you know what you're talking about.
I didn't plan all this.
You need to... Charge your mouth.
I just came as a...